Well, good morning. This is the Knox County Commissioners, October 2nd, 2025. We will be having our emergency management agency reports and thank you for being here. You'll say your names for those at home so that they'll know who you are and then tell them what you're about.
Yeah, I'm James Deschot, Director of Knox County Emergency Management, Office of Homeland Security.
Amy Seward, and I'm the Deputy Director.
So we'll go over some things here. Amy and I'll tag team this list. Pretty good separating duties and we keep each other apprised of things that are going on, but intricate little details. We've kind of know different things of each. So Amy, if you want to start with the National Preparedness Month.
So September was National Preparedness Month. We did a public service announcement on 93Q and 100.9. There were five of us that did a 30-second blurb and so it's been, they've been playing all month. I also did an interview with Marcy Reinhardt for National Preparedness Month that played on WNZR. So that went really good. And then I'm part of the ENC meeting, which is the Emergency Needs Committee meeting. And so I did a presentation with them this month of what EMA is and how we can help during a time of disaster or also helping them with their emergency operations plans and their COOP plan. So it was kind of a two-fold.
We also worked with Courtney Lauer on the Preparedness Month campaign for county employees. I'm sure you guys were on the email distribution list. Each week was kind of a different topic. We wanted each office to, you know, at least talk about, if not practice, their evacuation drills and things like that. So we're better prepared.
Um, I did a presentation at Frederick Town Local School on our reunification plan. And I'll talk about that more when we go into exercises, but that was a update to the plan to refresh all of the teachers and the staff about our plan and what we do if they ever need to activate the reunification plan. And then we also were a part of the Amish Health and Safety Event for the Frederick Town area community Amish populations. This year, they had about 550 Amish families that attended with the 40, about 40 support staff with various agencies. So that was the largest.
How many families did you share?
It was about 550 of them. So included children and husbands and wives.
Yeah, not, not, not just attendees, but more vendors than, and at least they vendor service providers than we've ever had as well. So.
Uh, one of the, one of the highlights, Lifelight came and landed because they want to educate them to know that it's not a scary thing if, if they have to use those services. And so they were able to touch the plant or touch the helicopter and sit in it. And so they had a lot of questions about.
Yeah, just bolt your horse and your buggy down.
Yeah. So that, it was a good, a good event. Morrow County Health Department's the one that organizes that event because it's located, they have it at the produce auction. So it's just right inside Morrow County. But we share that community with them. Um, and then I also did a presentation at the Frederick Town Community Watch. They do a monthly um, community meeting, neighborhood watch meeting. So I was their guest speaker for this month or for last month, I guess.
Uh, so last month, we had our regional CERT meeting. We had, uh, as we've been working on this regional project, um, as I've discussed in the past, several contiguous counties are falling in the same boat where we don't have someone on staff or volunteer that can run that CERT. And that's the Community Emergency Response Team. They're the ones that are going to come out and help with damage assessments, traffic control, whatever we may need. They're, they're community volunteers. But we got to keep their skills sharpened and, and the ones and needs that we have as, as EMA Directors for Response. And with that being said, it was a, you know, a great discussion amongst local EMs to say, hey, why can't we pool all of our people together? So we have a larger group to deploy. If I only have maybe four that can deploy in Knox County and I have an issue here, it'd be nice to be able to reach out to those other counties and maybe get 20 people that, that we would need. So we had a meeting up at Palm Park in an evening, had a cookout, um, had a high search, or I'm sorry, high special response team show up too. So there's like a good meet and greet with those folks. They're going to provide some training for our CERT members. And it was an all-around, uh, team building event. Um, we as directors kind of spoke about what our ones and needs in our counties are, what we were looking forward uh, to, to where this is going to go, what we want from the group. And it also gave them an opportunity to add, to tell us what trainings they would like to have. So.
Were you guys part of that, um, missing lady?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a job well done.
Well, we appreciate that. That was, uh, yeah, Unified Command, uh, set up pretty, pretty quick. And I think we have that later on down here, we can go into some detail about uh, exercises, Knox County School Reunification. We did training and exercise. Amy can, can speak more about it. We did round robin training. So we had stations set up with, with different subject matter experts from within our first responder community about the different positions and uh, what that walkthrough looked like. The second group was about communications. We realized teachers don't know radio etiquette. They don't talk on the radio all the time. So Josh Lester, sure you know him, um, did, did a piece with 911 on radio etiquette. And it was really neat. They took Legos and built, built something and then had to talk on the radio to describe to somebody that was on the other end of the building what that looked like. Uh, so it became readily noticeable to this group that it's not like talking on the phone. We have to visualize, be able to visualize what somebody's saying to understand things. You want to go ahead and expand on that a little bit?
All right. And then the last one, um, they got to go around the reunification site. So they did a tour, um, from the beginning to the end to talk about it. And then, uh, fire, um, talked about, fire and EMS talked about what their job would be during reunification, extra reunification, and then how law enforcement would be involved as well. So, um, it was super well received this year. Um, between, we had a couple, um, folks that just popped in for a little bit. Um, and so we had about 95 participants. Um, we also had folks from Richland County, Tuscarus, and
Fairfield.
Uh, well.
School system from Fairfield.
School system from Fairfield, but then, uh, Licking County EMs that came up to observe, um, what we're doing. And then, uh, we had Clearfork that came down and then, um, Lancaster City Schools came to observe as well. So, um, and then we had all of our schools, um, participated as well. Um, we did an exercise then, um, after our training, um, which that was always interesting um, because trainings, that's when you learn what your faults are. Um, so this time around, um, we added a checkout station um, so that we can track folks when they come in, um, to pick up their student and then also to track when they leave and who they leave with. So then that's just an extra set of accountability. Um.
So instead of using actual students, we paper students. So Amy looked at, at the class roster, was able to come up with real names that our check-in stations could use. And then it was scripted about what you were supposed to do. And we had some that tried to circumvent security. So we had to walk in and things like that.
Field health.
Yeah, the energy.
Yeah, the energy field health. So, uh, so yeah, we had, um, 35 parents that, we had parent actors, which were our participants. So then they could see then as a parent perspective of what that reunification looks like instead of as a, as a worker. So trying to do a well-rounded, um, experience. And so, uh, I think I had 15 of them that didn't have any issues that they had their IDs and they could go right through. And then there were other ones that had some kind of issue of either not having an ID. Um, I did put in as an intoxicated parent, um, just because that can always be an option. I mean, it could happen. So, um, that one was a fun inject. So, uh, they were, they enjoyed it. Um, and so we, we always try to, I don't want to say make light of it, but we always try to have a fun component to it.
You got to take the stress off to a point.
Because it is a ser- because it is a serious aspect, but if we can add some fun into it, they're going to keep that in mind. So, um.
Uh, Rich Miller did a real good job of, of going over incident command structure. So we had the command chart, uh, unified command chart, uh, visible for them on poster size. And then he went over about, you know, if, if you're here on the chart, who do you answer to? And, and if you have needs, who does that person go to? And when we did the hot wash and discussed after this exercise, it was apparent that that really helped them understand having that extra training on command that when they actually did the exercise this time and there were some little small fires to put out, they figured out they were empowered to put those out themselves. And those that were in the, this command position said, you know, last year, it must've been 15 times. They're like, here's what I have. What do we do? And this year it was, hey, we had an incident, but this is what we did. And that's fine because you want those people, those higher levels making more policy level decisions. So.
That's a quicker reaction time too, right?
Oh, yes. Yeah, obviously.
So it's more efficient.
Yeah, efficient.
Makes sense.
Um, and then I, the day before our reunification exercise, I helped to evaluate Richland County's, uh, LEPC. They did a tabletop exercise. Uh, they ju- they had an incident at the fairgrounds and then they talked through what, what that incident is. And then, uh, and so, yeah, we went through that. And then, uh, Delaware County, they activated their EOC for the Little Brown Jug. So we were able to go over for the afternoon and sit in on their EOC and see how that, um, how that functions. So.
Yeah, that was kind of nice. So they were, we were set up in a way where we could actually resource needs for real-world events. But as the day progressed, um, first we, you know, we were able to have the, the races up. So we're, you know, betting candy for our favorite horse name and things as we did this. Um, but we also created injects of our own that, you know, this happened and we need a light plant. How do we go about that ordering process? So we actually used forms to complete this. So even though it was a real-world event, we use it as an exercise. Delaware County realized if we have an event, we're not going to be able to do this our own. We're going to call on you folks to come help us. You need to be familiar with what our paperwork looks like. And even as we work through some of these, it was decided that, oh, hey, it'd be real nice if we had a checkbox right here on this form that, that said this. So the next person would know. And there was somebody right there that would open that document up, fix it, print it. Is this what you're looking for? Yes. And we would change it as, as the day evolved. So it was really pretty nice.
Amy, the people watching, tell them what LEPC stands for.
Uh, Local Emergency Planning Committee. So that is the committee, if there is ever a hazmat situation, um, that committee oversees the, I don't want to say, yeah, oversees the incident. Um, and then they also are the ones that, um, accept the plan.
Sign off our county-wide plan, enter the review and updates.
Then we have to do a exercise as part of that plan. We have to do that kind of exercise every year. So.
Who are the members of that for Knox County?
Our first responders, partner agencies, uh, Barry's on that. Uh, Health Department's part of it.
Media.
Media. Anybody would be intricately involved in, in response. Uh, EMAO Education Committee under planning. Uh, Amy and I are both on the education committee. We've, uh, had a couple of meetings. Actually tomorrow is our, uh, fall EMAO conference. Um, we're having a watch party with several counties together tomorrow. Uh, for that, we've also finalized the learning conference, which is itself work in December, um, picking our presenters and our speakers for that.
And I'm the co-chair for our Amish Health and Safety Caucus. Uh, we just had our, uh, quarterly meeting, um, with our group. I guess that was just on Tuesday, wasn't it? Um, we had a guest speaker from the Beholt, um, Education Center over in Berlin to discuss the different orders of the Amish and, um, share about the different, uh, populations that we have. So there are 73,000, or excuse me, not that many. We have 70, there's 73, um, community, established communities in Ohio of Amish. And so, um, with 88 counties, there's a likelihood that there's, there's a connection somewhere. So then we had a really good turnout and a lot of good questions with, um, his name was Marcus.
Probably Miller.
No, I, um, blanking on it right now, what Marcus' last name is, but he's the Executive Director of the Beholt. And like I said, that he shared, um, just how to work with the Amish population and what, um, the different orders are. Um, because Ohio has four different orders and I'm not going to get into all of it, but they're very distinctive of what they can and cannot do, um, what they believe in. Um, and so after he explained those, I can definitely tell which orders are in Knox County, um, versus in our other surrounding, um, counties. So.
So for those who are watching, can you define for the, we English, um, you know, the orders that we have in Knox County?
Yeah. So we have, um, the Swartin Trooper, um, order, which, um, is down in the, um, Blainsburg, Martinsburg area. And then we have, um, the, oh my gosh, the Andy Weaver, um, order, which is in Frederick Town and in Danville. Um, and so those orders, they do not, um, like ride bicycles. Um, they're dressed in their traditional, um, the Amish with the aprons. Um, and then there's, and the old order and new order, which the old order, they are, um, allowed to ride bicycles, um, have e-bikes, um, a little, a little bit more progressive. Um, and there is a section in Danville that has the new order Amish in it, um, in which they're a little bit more progressive than the old order. So, um, it's, it's very interesting.
Ninety-year.
Um, I'm assuming that's the, uh, Andy Weaver one where it's what we would consider the traditional Amish of the horse and buggy, no bicycles type.
But I see them on bikes.
Okay. So, okay. So then that would be the new order.
Especially the scoops.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But obviously knowing the different wants and needs from those communities, what they have, you know, uh, especially with the e-bikes.
Yeah.
Charging systems that they're not used to and fires and things like that.
And then the, some of the old order, um, while they're allowed to, to drive the golf carts and the e-bikes. And so then that poses other safety issues, um, the road safety issue. So it's a, a little bit more complex than what's just the, hey, we have an Amish population. Um, and so then that's the whole point of having our Amish Health and Safety Events then is where they can come together and we can do proper education and bringing in the subject matter experts.
So when you have those times where you have to help, is there an issue of different orders coming together for that?
Um.
I would say no, because it's the same community.
Well, with Danville.
Well, Danville's got two.
Yeah, Danville had two. So we only had one of their communities that, that came. So, but like with the Frederick Town community, that is, they're all the, the same order. So there wasn't really any issues with them coming together. So.
Good, good information to have.
Uh, as we worked through our Hazard Mitigation Plan update with Sandy at Resource Solutions, uh, one of the things is dam safety. Um, that being said, she wanted to come down and kind of get some eyes on a couple of, uh, the, the class dams within Knox County. Uh, Damascus, uh, Church Camp, Catholic Church Camp there, North of Centerburg was one of them. Uh, last week she come down and Amy was able to go with her, uh, to actually do a site survey of that. Um, well, that's understanding what populations they have, what the topography looks like, perhaps be a failure, what flood inundation mapping looks like, which may open, you know, uh, hazard mitigation monies later for, you know, federally funded projects. Do you have anything else to add about your tour?
I did a site visit last Friday with Danville Elementary, um, to discuss some of their security measures, um, that they were facing at the school. So the school resource officer was there and then, um, we, I went with, uh, Rick Schaefer from Mount Vernon City and met with the superintendent and, um, some of the elementary, um, teachers to discuss what, how they can shore up their safety measures. So that was a good, a good meeting.
That's notifications contractor review. So as we come upon the renewal for Inspiron Logistics or WENS that we use as our wireless emergency, um, service here in Knox County, um, we get inundated with sales calls. People want this whole stuff all the time. Um, it's not always things that we even have. Um, and there again, there's not a, a magic website that these contractors can go to or these, these companies to say, well, this is what they have. We'll call them. Um, but with that coming around, we know that's, that's one of those pricey items that they, it comes out of your budget uh, for the entire county. And we certainly appreciate that, um, being able to, to, to use that for not just normal day-to-day notifications to groups, but you know, that emergency response. So I thought, you know, to be a good steward of taxpayer money, let's, let's look in to see what, you know, else is available. Um, I did meet with a company. Um, they had quite a price reduction from what we're paying. Um, but as I did my research and I understood why prices are lower in different companies. And this, the one in particular was a newer company. Um, and then I spoke with Inspiron Logistics again. They knew we were kind of, you know, fishing around because I had asked emails, hey, is there any, you know, reductions, anything like that? So. Several years ago, the cell phone companies got to see that, hey, we're, we're missing the boat here. We can charge, you know, uh, percent of each text message that's sent through our carriers. They're using our system to send their messages. So I'll throw out that our arbitrary three cents, right? So you look at Miami Dade, eight, over eight million people. If they only send three alerts out a month, they're around 30,000 text messages or 30 million text messages, right? Eight million people, three times, close to 30 million. If each one of those text messages, AT&amp;C says, we're charging you three cents for each one of those, pretty quick, they're going to start racking up bills, right? So you look at a company that charges a third of what maybe Inspiron Logistics does, because they're a new company and they want people. Not too far down the road, they're paying these carriers that per text message, three cents, they could run out of money.
Right.
They're going to be out of business. We're gobbled up by one of the larger companies. So WENS is one of the major three. We have Everbridge and Cochrane. Those are, are two of the others that are, that are large scale. They've been around for years. We've had them here in the county for at least 15 that I can think of. Um, and with Inspiron Logistics package deal, you get what you get. You get everything available to them. With the smaller companies, you get their packages being able to send alerts. But if you want to be able to send the IPOS, you know, the, the weather or emergency evacuation alerts, it's another $5,000. If you folks come to me and say, hey, Barry wants to be able to decide that I can send a mass notification to everybody in this office and we put you on as a user through Inspiron Logistics, it's free. Through some of these other companies, you'll get an invoice. Hey, it was $500 last month because you added somebody. So I think we're kind of to a point, we're not having issues or major issues with Inspiron Logistics and WENS. It seems to work. Our folks know about it. We've got kind of our consumer base already tied up. I think it's probably a smart choice, uh, to continue that. So, uh, that within the next month will probably be, um, across your desk for, for payment on that. It's the renewals of, I believe.
It's the same company we're currently.
Yes, yes. And there again, support when we've had, Amy or I have had issues. I called, his first name's Nick. Usually have to leave a message and I'm telling you, within 20 minutes, he's calling me back and we're working through these problems. Um, sometimes it's been just, it's a carrier issue that he's just saying, we don't have control. You don't have control. T-Mobile is, for some reason, locks up down and we weren't able to send messages. Um, but there again, it's having that support and they're not charging us extra for those phone calls, things like that. So.
So that, so that I understand what you're saying of, when we send out an alert, are we being charged then?
No, we are not. So Inspiron Logistics is being charged.
Okay, so it's a.
When we send those out, we, we pay the flat amount.
Okay. Cause I know that, uh, on the 911 services, uh, each cell phone, I think it's charged a certain, or each phone number gets a, the, like the.
Well, they, they have that, that's the state tags. Yeah.
Statewide fee.
Yeah. And there again, that was two or three cents that a lot of states were taking advantage of to help fund 911 that Ohio wasn't doing until recently.
It doesn't generate much, but at least for Knox County. And the increase didn't really do.
No, and you don't notice two or three cents on your bill, right?
Yeah. And they were talking about increasing it up, I think up to a dollar. And they said, no, I'm not going to give that.
Yeah. I mean, it, I think for our county, it's between eight and $12,000 a month. So it's not a considerable piece of the budget for the year by any means.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and the carriers are passing this on to the, you know, the companies like Inspiron Logistics and Cochrane, not us as users.
Right. They're actually a middleman.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Uh, our Ares Group, that's our Amateur Radio Emergency Services Group, uh, has been kind of active. They've been, uh, here in this building down in 911, using the, uh, radios down there for testing. Um, they've been out to our office on a routine basis, testing those and making sure, you know, they're up and running, uh, at the time of emergency. If they're getting ready to, I think it's this month, I can't remember the date, doing a statewide exercise. So they'll be in our office doing that, uh, making sure they can talk to who they need to talk to in the event of emergency. Uh, the draft plan, as I said, for Knox County Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, worked with Andrew to get that posted on the county website. So that's in the public notices. It's open for public review. Everything's kind of that finalization stage. Um, October 1st through the 16th. So you can get on and look at that for any input, all the worksheets that you folks sat in on, uh, our workshops. Those are part of that.
So the public should go on our online and.
Yes, go to Mr.'s website, public notices and under EMA, I don't think it's the public notices tab, but under EMA, it's posted right there and they can open up and download it. Look at it.
Yeah.
And any questions, uh, you know, they can email me, call me, um, or our consultant to go through those. Yeah. Uh, Grant, Amy?
Um, so I applied through our fiscal 25 state homeland security grant to purchase barriers for outdoor events. Um, we'll put in, I put in 250,000. We'll see how much we, we get out of that 250,000. Um, we were quoted for a, um, barrier trailer kit, um, at about $140,000.
Barry won't give a thought.
Probably, but we'll, we'll see. I'm, I'm hoping for at least to be able to purchase one of the, the trailers. Um, we're having more events, outdoor events, um, here in the county in that, um, with the uptick of outdoor, um, well, I want to say that we've had.
Active threat.
Active threats, um, that this helps to protect those, um, open, uh, open air events. So I don't know when they, when it closes, but hopefully here, we'll hear back in the next month or so. Um, but this is a state grant, um, so it's not affected by the government shutdown. Um, I did apply for a federal government grant and I checked on it this morning and the website's shut down. So that is where we are with that grant. Um.
So that barricade trailer would be a regional asset, which we do have some in the region. But we also had an issue this year with Tomato Show. Uh, Tracy Mars, chief up there, requested the, the barricade trailer. Uh, we usually go to Licking County and get one of their two. They were both out. Um, Franklin County happened to have something going on too, and the ones in Franklin County were being used. So. Um, Franklin County happened to have something going on too, and the ones in Franklin County were being used, so. I think we were kind of able to have that proof of need, um not just in our county, but regionally, that that we need another set or or two sets to have that and and but it's pretty high-tech, you know, they're they're seven, eight hundred pounds apiece, but there's a T-handled dolly uh with a wheel and one person can move it like it's a bag of feathers. Uh, it's it's unbelievable. Uh, the trailer that you transport these things on uh has hydraulics that that raise it and lower it to ground level, so nobody's busting their backs getting these things off, getting the deployed, um and there again, it's it's better than having the to tiller a bunch of the concrete jersey barriers and having a forklift, then how do you get it there, you need a truck for that. It it's just an amazing asset to to have locally if this happens.
So would that be something that we could use at Board of Elections?
Yes.
Talked about that, yeah, that would be something that they can, that they would be able to use as well, because that was part of the grant of for election time, so.
We think it's the same ones we use at the Mount Vernon Arts Festival, Music and Arts Festival.
Yes, they are, those were, yeah, it's the same, same type, so.
And if you've not seen them work, there are many crash tests that are on YouTube, if you look at Meridian Barriers, and it's unbelievable how quick it'll stop a vehicle. And and you think like the Tomato Show, you've got State Route ninety-five, you know, coming right in there.
Thirteen.
Several years ago, there was a pursuit in Marion during the popcorn festival and they got off twenty-three and everybody's like, ooh, it's too late to scramble dump trucks, backhoes and things like that to block this. That this would have been a prime time to have something like that, now they got it stopped before it got down there, but you you just don't know, and and there again, if it's a state, you know, a a regional grant option, why not ask for it?
Sure. And that was the cream of the crop too, so if we don't get all that money, then there's other options to still get the barriers and not the kid, the whole nice cream of the crop one, but we'll see what happens, so.
Okay, uh Rescue Task Force Incident Command, so I was able to go to uh Sunberry. Um, one of local churches, you know, a township PD, Westerville Fire, their rescue task force uh put on a class and they asked Lieutenant Feeny and I to come down and and do some training with them and is not just uh instruct on our specific subject matter, but kind of learn how they do things different down there. I said on the incident command side of things, picked up some good pointers, we're gonna change kind of the way we set up our incident command here uh from doing so. Um, I sat in on the tactical analysis unit, Homeland Security Reports and Intel Sharing. Uh, we get this the cybersecurity and physical security um emails almost daily, sometimes two or three. Um, it it was very good information about how to upload um information that we have locally that we don't always uh talk about. And with that, uh we're immediately after was statewide terrorism analysis and crime center brief, uh that we called the stack. Um, and they talked about like swatting calls, we we may have one, uh there was one at Nazarene University uh not too long ago, they want to know about those things, because after the fact, we thought, hey, it's just us. Crank call, now come to find out that day, at that time period, there were multiple universities all across the Midwest, they got the same call. That helps them understand that maybe we're just a piece of that puzzle. That may help them understand who that person might be, who that threat actor was, why they did it and things like that, so. Uh, very good to be part of that, um as a, they call it an intelligence liaison officer. Uh, I fill that role for Knox County, so any intel that comes to us uh comes to Knox County for something, comes to me and then I fill it and give it to whoever needs it, and there again, they need to report to me if there's an incident that I can report it to the stack, so somebody else on the, on the other end gets our information.
Uh, I won't worry with all the professional development, but I did uh complete my advanced professional series, um training through FEMA, it was about a three-year process, it's just that I met um all of the um classes that are required to get that series, so.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Um, so yeah, so that will be something that if I ever move into a director role, then I don't have to complete that, but at that time, so that will, that will alre- already be done, so, um. So yeah, then you, I just completed a couple other um professional development events um in September, so it was a busy month for us, I'm and October's not slowing down either. Um, we did the, we did site support for the missing lady on McCannet Road um back at the beginning of September.
That's probably your first large-scale incident.
Yeah.
Um, so Amy really got to see how, as unified command comes together, how different groups are tasked with with options, or or I'm sorry, with um missions, um. We started the first day about noon and I think I finally went home at one-thirty in the morning. Um, we had maybe forty at one time and in that area, cellphone coverage was so horrific, we were operating off two cellphones, forty people. Um, thank heavens, uh Fire Chief Dan Rice was there and Craig Feeny brought his personal cellphone with him, so it's a much easier function. Um, those were things we had to mitigate, right, obviously, so by the morning and second day, we had um.
Starlink.
Starlink set up, we had sixteen people able to connect within the first ten minutes, it's on, we were three, four hundred feet away, able to activate our phones to have wifi calling, so we could actually communicate. Um, and feed people, right, so it was was uh us getting called a Salvation Army, the food truck out there. Chaplain Tracy and Jerry Scott come out with that and was able to get, you know, food and and drinks for, you know, the support. Uh, Laura Webster and and the old Montgomery were able to go to Harry Church and set up a volunteer response center or perception center, so the community members want to help with the search, they were able to go do that, take that off our plate in incident command and we would just have to notify them, hey, we have a uh canine search team here that needs four volunteers to walk with them. So we would radio over and say, hey, we need four. Um, with that, the Marx radio system, not everybody was able to talk on the same channel. We had Rick LaNusa sitting up at Frederick County EMS, it was able to get online with the Tango Tango that we'd already set up for the solar eclipse and he just went in and changed the name and changed the channel and put more people on so we could all talk. So challenges that popped up during that whole thing, we were right there in the middle of it and it's not one of those agencies could have done that by themselves.
Isn't the Mark system kind of going away?
Oh, no, no.
Actually, it's the, it's the opposite, that people are getting wanted, more people are getting wanted. Cause it's the the.
It's not VHF, VHF digital, so, yeah. But the Tango Tango allows us to use our cellphones as two-way radios, that's what that does. There again, redundancy in communication, you think about that area, we didn't have, you know, operability because of towers. Think about an internet or a cellphone tower that's taken out by a storm and you folks not being able to communicate. This is something we can put you on to and now you can't, so.
And then we also had a spill response on the Sheer Road, so.
Yes.
I'm telling you, September was something else, like.
Yeah, that was two days later.
A week. A week later, it was on a Monday.
Yeah, liquid asphalt, uh with the spiller and EPA to get that cleaned up, done, sounded like everybody was happy, um a little bit of damage, um. They found it was an asphalt, I mean, I think they patched them, they threw the outs in the roadway, uh stopped with a cat, Ricky.
One two weeks prior to that.
Yeah. Yeah, my first call to Cameron, I said, I assume you heard about the accident, I'm missing, he says, this is why we can't have anything nice. Well, I guess, so, well, thanks.
Yeah.
So much.
Thank you. The scheduling DNC meetings.
Uh.
They, I'm on there, but they have every time there's a.
Yeah, it's on Thursday mornings at.
Yeah.
Ten o'clock.
Thought it was never gonna make it.
Right.
Yeah.
So yeah, I don't know, that's a, I'm assuming that's their traditional time, so.
They keep sending me the emails and the minutes and stuff, but I'm like.
So, so yes, that's.
Hot flux, yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we've got a few resolutions to go through here.
Well, we have a, we have a guest.
Well, can we do these, because Penny and I have to go across the street.
Oh, okay, yes.
We can get these out of the way real fast.
Sounds good.
Approved a utility permit for Lincoln River Electric on Hopewell Road, Pleasant Township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favors say aye.
Aye.
Then we have a utility permit, Lincoln River Electric, Apple Valley, or Apple Valley and Bieber Roads in Brown Township.
Motion approved.
Second.
Those favors say aye.
Aye.
And then we have a proven agreement for professional service with Arcadius for the Knox County Water Waste Water Well. Uh, number seven development for thirty-five thousand, this is, Jeff has obviously talked to you guys about building that new well.
Yes.
And this is working with the engineering firm to uh start that process, so this is ready to go and it'll come out of water wastewater funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
That just requires one signature. We have a master purchase agreement with Axon Enterprises for the Sheriff's Office, uh this is for evidence redaction assistance. Uh, user license and the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents for a period of thirty-nine months. And this, I think, is an addendum, Chip mentioned through an existing contract, so I think we'll get. And.
Motion to approve.
The seconded.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That'll just require one. And then we have an addendum to the Community Based Correction Subsidy Grant of the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections. This is for common police court, the agenda will uh increases the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
And that will require all three of your signatures. And then we have an inter-agency contractor agreement between Knox County Job Family Services and Welsh Legal Services for ninety-six thousand dollars. This is, I think we do this annually, right, then they perfect legal work that they have up there versus having an attorney on staff. Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Uh. Requires all three of you to sign. Then we have a fixed-price membership agreement between the Ohio State University John Bonn College of Public Affairs and the Knox County Department of Job Family Services. And this is for management advancement for public service, that's a MAPS training program for three thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
And we do have one item we want to add, uh prosecutors wrote it down yesterday, the Knox County Sheriff's Office. Each year, under our marine patrol grant, we have, we patrol Apple Valley and we do that with a boat that actually belongs to ODNR and we have a contract to use that boat. And uh Chip wrote this down and it appears ODNR does, no longer wants the boat. And so this is a donation agreement, whereas they're giving that a boat to the Knox County Sheriff's Office, to the Knox County Commissioners. So, if you're inclined, we'll accept that and then we'll get it added to the county liability insurance.
Motion to approve.
Second. Those favors say aye.
Aye.
And then here's two bills and transfers. And again, you're gonna sign today on the bill list is signing for that purchase of a uh transit and the county business and then we're putting down there for that building, so that's on the bill list and then I'll sign the closing documents on Monday, that'll be, that process will be done. Um, and on that way every day, Bonner Builder was all done with the work bin, you know, in front of the veterans.
I saw they were finishing up, yeah.
Really looks good and thanks to custom cutters and I think it was uh ten contr- contractors for the concrete work, it really looks good and it's all repaired and ready to go for winter, so it's, that's all I have for you today.
Thank you.
Okay. And uh, yeah, Penny and I are gonna head over to the healthcare here in a minute.
Okay, good. And then you wanna come and say who you are, so it's because we're live streaming.
Mm-hmm.
Of course. So I'm David Driver with the Ohio Secretary of State's Office, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I'm the regional liaison. Regional liaison for the area.
Yes.
Um, just kinda wanna introduce myself. Of course, the Ohio Secretary of State's Office, we work with uh businesses and the Board of Elections, so we have two responsibilities there. And um, uh first off, I I do a lot with the Chamber of Commerce, I try to make it to a lot of uh your your ribbon cuttings and such, so I'll try to be at that, we give commendations to new, to new businesses, whether they're starting a business or for opening a new location for their business, et cetera. And then I also do a lot with the Boards of Elections, so um you know, County Board of Elections, they've been doing a great job. They've got a lot of curveballs to run their way, um and we appreciate all the work that they've done. Uh, especially with uh getting this new mobile voting unit that they have. I know our office is really psyched about that, we have one, Public Integrity Division, they're really geeking out about uh the the mobile unit that they have, so I think they're gonna be down here uh next Friday to look at that. Um, it's something that I don't think any county has for their Boards of Elections, so they're really excited about that. Uh, and you, as usual, getting uh precinct uh elections officials, poll workers. Trying to get them is always a challenge every year when it comes to voting, so I know sometimes it's hard for you guys, if you wanna be a poll worker, because sometimes you guys roll the ballot, of course, but uh we really encourage uh people to become poll workers and for you guys to be poll workers.
We were last election in county, we were good and we had people on a waiting list, I think.
Good, okay, okay. I know sometimes it'd be hard with these smaller elections because people
Yeah.
don't know about them.
Or so it was a big election.
Don't, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Registration deadline is October sixth.
Mm-hmm.
For this year, so that's just next week.
Mm-hmm, so, yeah, we've been gearing up for that, uh your county, where elections have been doing a great job.
Good.
So, we've been real happy with them, but uh, yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself.
Obviously, thank you. Did you have a hard time conversing with Jim Blazer?
Oh, no, he's great, he does most of the talking.
I was gonna say, he's a talker.
Yeah, yeah, he does a great job.
Yeah, he's really good.
Really happy with that.
We like him.
Yeah, yeah, they've done a great job, so, but yeah, I just, I don't want to take up too much of your time.
Well, we appreciate it.
Nice meeting, Caleb.
Yeah, nice to meet you guys as well.
Appreciate you.
Got finished, yes. Gotta hop on down to Perry County, that's not where I got.
Oh, okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, of course, yes, thank you.
Pretty good.
Have a great day. And I want you.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. You guys have a good one.
You too.
And so, since everyone left, I guess, probably adjourned, adjourned since Penny sometimes take any minutes.
Motion to adjourn.
I second it.
So we are standing adjourned, thank you for, have a good weekend.